Item number fifteen is an ordinance amending the land use categories in Chapter thirty-five of the city's Unified Development Code to implement the SA Tomorrow Comprehensive Plan.
Councilwoman Viegrin.
Thank you, Mayor. I think there's a presentation. Rudy, if you could please give that.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Mr. Mayor and council members. The next item is consideration of proposed amendments to two sections of the Unified Development Code as detailed in your packet. This item was first considered at your June twenty-first public hearing but was tabled at the request of council to conduct further, a further round of public outreach, which the Department completed in the summer of this year. As part of my presentation, I'll include details of the staff proposal as presented to the community in open forums, as well as an outline of the full public engagement effort. First, I would like to begin with a primer on what SA Tomorrow is and how it's being implemented in the community. The Comprehensive Plan is the city's land use and urban planning policy. The plan details how and where the city should aggregate future growth. Using data related to existing job centers, we were able to identify where future job and housing options should go in order to capitalize on investments by both the public and the private sectors. Additionally, the plan also recommends the development of community plans to provide a land use plan and map for the balance of the city. These areas partner neighborhoods that have similar characteristics such as time of development, number of neighborhoods, and similar challenges and opportunities. It should be noted that community areas are not intended to specifically accommodate significant amounts of future growth. The idea behind these plans is to ensure that we have addressed land use, mobility, and infrastructure requirements, for example, for these areas at a community scale and to have more, a comprehensive assessment and guidance for future improvements and bond projects. The Planning Department will utilize existing plans as a critical baseline for the development of modern plans that address land use at the community scale but also support neighborhood conservation and promote local priorities. The council directed the Department to initiate the regional center plans within a three-year work plan and the balance of the subarea plans within five years. Then, the Department will take the critical next steps related to implementing the plans so that they do not sit on the shelf. This slide details what a land use plan is. In summation, the city's land use policy for a specific area that details how the area will grow and develop, what pattern that growth should take, and recommends an actionable plan to implement the land use recommendations. In short, land use is intended to provide cohesive districts with compatible uses. However, it should also be noted that a land use plan is much more than a map. It defines a future for a community through policies as well. These policies and the land use map together are guiding principles for decisions related to the land use planning and future investments in a community. These decisions are made by the development-related boards and commissions of the city as well as you, the City Council. Having said all of this, a part of implementing the Comprehensive Plan and to better develop modern, more comprehensive subarea plans, the Department is now proposing to update the land use categories in the Unified Development Code to ensure that we have a clear, concise set of land use categories that will guide our city into the future while addressing longstanding needs in our community. Through the years and based on the Comprehensive Plan adopted in the 1970s and updated in nineteen ninety-nine, the city implemented a series of neighborhood and community plans to guide growth and development. Over forty plans in all, the city has yet to enjoy a land use map for all of San Antonio, and this fact remains even after almost forty years. Each of these plans has their own set of discrete land use categories, yet most differ from those categories in neighboring plans, setting the community up for a disjointed land use pattern and unfortunately disallowing, in many cases, opportunity and choice in some areas of our community. SA Tomorrow recommends an approach where opportunity and choice related to future land use is available to all areas of our community. Choice for folks that have fewer options, thus addressing community equity, and access to the services that are needed no matter where you live in the city. The proposed amendments would take the city from the current set of over fifty categories to a harmonious set of clearly defined categories that address the city's future land use needs. On the screen now, you can see the community engagement effort that was conducted to get to this point in the process. From focus group meetings to citywide meetings with residents, to outreach with organizations like Sage, to engagement with staff in your offices at a number of key points in the process. Additionally, the Comprehensive Plan Committee forwarded these amendments back to the City Council following a series of community meetings that were conducted by the local chapter of the American Institute of Architects. I would like to thank the AIA and we, state that we appreciate the effort of the AIA architects in that process. On the screen now, you can see the timeline of the formal adoption process, which included a number of briefings to committees and consideration by both the Planning Commission's Technical Advisory Committee, as well as the full Planning Commission and the Zoning Commission. Both of these city commissions recommended approval to the City Council with a unanimous vote. The two matrices on the screen detail just one example of the inconsistency between two neighboring plan areas. These matrices highlight the lack of overall consistency and the potential for a future land use pattern that does not provide the city with an efficient nor effective use of our land. This next slide now shows the full list of proposed land use categories. Of note is the addition of the urban low-density residential land use category. This proposed category represents, in addition to staff's initial proposal, as recommended by attendees of a meeting with the Tier One Neighborhood Group on December eighteenth, 2017. Additionally, the proposal includes a more nuanced approach to mixed uses, to include a new business innovation mixed-use category that would permit live-work opportunities near future business parks and innovation and technology centers. Additionally, the residential land use categories are also proposed for an update to reflect an updated approach to residential density in the city. While developing this proposal, it should be noted that the Department conducted research into the most populous cities in the country and have similar, that have similar Comprehensive Plan policies related to growth allocation, leveraging transit investments, and other inputs. We looked into how our proposed categories related and where they also differed, basically doing a review of national best practices. We found that in, that in all, the proposal before you today is one that is on the lower end of the density spectrum when compared to other comparable cities. Yet, we, we still believe that these modest updates to our code will allow us to fulfill the SA Tomorrow recommendations and believe that we can utilize these incremental changes to address our future land use needs and remain economically competitive. On this slide, you can see the tracked changes version for transparency. Making these revisions, as previously stated, we can eliminate some redundancies and provide for more opportunity, choice, and flexibility in terms of land use in our community. With that, staff recommends approval of the proposed staff recommendation as provided to the council in your packet. You also have a copy of that proposal at the, at your seats. This concludes my formal presentation. I thank you for your kind attention. I will be available for your questions following your citizen comments.
Thank you, Rudy. Councilwoman, we have several citizens signed up to speak on this item. I'll call them now. We'll begin with Ross Lawhead.
Thank you, Mayor. I had Mr. Bruce Mary with me, and he did sign in, but he had to leave for a funeral. I don't know if I can have his three minutes or not. You can My name is Ross Lawhead. I am the volunteer land use attorney for the Oakland Estates Neighborhood Association in District Eight, and I reside at fifty-nine seventy-five Lock Hill Road, San Antonio, Texas. I'm here to speak about the land use category definition adjustments. I have a couple of concerns about it. One is a general concern that all this is being used to drive density, and it's being used to drive density only in neighborhoods that don't benefit from having restrictive covenants that prevent it, and I don't like that about it. I know that council is headed this way anyway. I have a couple of comments. I don't like that the low-density residential includes R4, which is four thousand square-foot lot, which is smaller than traditional city lots, but I understand that Tier One wants it there, so I would ask the Planning Department to consider creating a suburban, low-density residential that does not include R4. I would also support what I've heard from Tier One, which is the medium-density residential should not include MF-33, which is multifamily, which allows four-story apartment buildings. I think it really shows where this whole thing is heading when you call something medium-density residential and it includes four-story apartment buildings. That's my objection. I would now like to make an additional request related to this, which is the Planning Department has moved forward to make changes at the expense of neighborhood plans, and as you go forward and presumably approve these land use category changes, I would urge you to do a council consideration request to get strengthening neighborhood plans onto your agenda so that it can be addressed. For residents of older neighborhoods not protected by restrictive covenants, the future land use plans in neighborhood plans are the only means for any input into the future land use in their neighborhoods. The citizen input processes for the development of these land use plans are exhausting and sometimes divisive. Redevelopment interests can buy a single lot and then get a seat at the table and seek to change an entire neighborhood. In this context, council members seek consensus but may eventually need to make hard decisions before these plans are approved by council. These decisions should not be excessively relitigated. San Antonio Tomorrow plans to eliminate neighborhood plan land use plans by rolling them into larger subarea plans. One of my great concerns is that when a subarea plan comes to council, you're going to pass it because it's so large, you're not going to reject it over the problems of an individual neighborhood. Planning says it will honor land use plans, but it intends to require them to be redone to remain effective. This is the problem. The planning process for citizen input is so exhausting, and you have literally hundreds of citizens that have put in hundreds of hours, and now we're basically looking at that being disrespected. I have particularly looked at the existing UDC provisions that require five-year interval full-process renewals of neighborhood plans. Planning has not allocated sufficient resources to support this requirement, so they've let these neighborhood plans basically go to where they're not fully influential, but very recently, a temporary rule determination was made to protect them in the interim, led, in fact, by development services but acquiesced in by planning. My problem is nothing legally enforceable requires planning to retain neighborhood-based local control over the citizen input process for future land use plan development, revision, or renewal. So, for example, I'm in Oakland Estates. We know what we want in Oakland Estates. We have a land use plan. We had to fight for it a great deal with the Planning Department, but we have it. But if later on, this just gets rolled up into a subarea plan, there's nothing committing the Planning Department to use Oakland Estates residents to plan Oakland Estates land use. We could be simply one person on a committee of ten over a larger area. They are not locked in, and there's too much discretion, and they've blown away the little influence we have by putting neighborhood plans in play. Oakland Estates has drafted proposed ordinance to solve these matters. Part of that's on there. If I could ask you, sir, to shove it up a little because the part at the top is less relevant. Key elements of this ordinance are to roll forward the current land use plans into SA Tomorrow without the gating requirement of these exhausting renewals. To make plan renewals at the discretion of the Planning Department, they still have the power to come in if they're rolled forward, but you need to understand, the way it's written right now, any developer can require a wholesale plan renewal. All they've got to do is buy one piece of property or put it under option in my neighborhood, and then they can require us to go through this exhausting process. They don't need that power because they already have a parallel power. When they want to rezone, they can actually get a concurrent process before the Planning Commission for a spot plan amendment so that they can do the rezoning. So if you give them the rezoning, they don't need this power. This is a separate power where they can force, I don't know, dozens of my neighbors to put in, I don't know, fifty or a hundred hours over a period of six months to a year just to technically renew the neighborhood plan under the existing ordinance language, which is not proposed for amendment. I don't know if I had three or six. I'll conclude. Actions should be, actions should be taken now to protect neighborhood plans while planning is modifying in the UDC because the neighborhoods are paying attention right now. You should respect the volunteer efforts, and we request a CCR, and I ask that Deputy City Manager Zamboni get involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawhead. Tony Garcia?
Good morning, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Tony Garcia. I live at two forty-three East Weisage in the Montavista Historic District. I'm a board member of the Montavista Historic Association. The association is also a member of the Tier One Neighborhood Coalition. I have a statement to read on behalf of the association. The Montavista Historical Association agrees that San Antonio's future land use categories will help create a more consistent, predictable, and defined classification than what is currently found under the UDC. The association further agrees that these future land use categories will help address inconsistent categories found in many of San Antonio's outdated neighborhood plans. With the above understanding, the association does hope the city of San Antonio will not discard our nineteen eighty-eight neighborhood plan but update and make it an integral part of the subarea land use discussions within the SA Tomorrow process. The Montavista Historical Association supports the future land use categories being proposed by the city of San Anto, San Antonio. Furthermore, the association strongly supports the amendments being proposed by District One Office as it further refines the future land use categories while maintaining the residential character of Montavista Historic District and many other inner-city neighborhoods. These amendments are based on community input, including that of the Montavista Historical Association. We therefore request your serious consideration of these amendments to the future land use classifications. Yours and community, Melody Hall, President of the Montavista Historical Association. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Philip Mana?
Good day. My name is Philip Mana. I live at nine five two five Rochelle. I am the president of the Alamo Farmshead's Neighborhood Association, and I was the planning chair of the Heaton or Leon Creeks Community Plan. And for the last three years, I've been one of the few community members on the City of San Antonio Planning Commission Technical Advisory Committee. There's a large cadre of well-funded, full-time developers and their support teams that look to maximize their potential return on development opportunities, sometimes at the detriment of existing communities supported by ill-funded, part-time volunteers that are neighbors that are trying to protect their communities. The primary tools used for the growing city between communities and developers are communication, there is communication. And fortunately, the city has provided a lot of good tools for this, which includes the community plans, neighborhood plans, community zoning commissions, and the UDC. And each of these avenues allows for input and feedback on how developers must engage within communities. The Heaton or Leon Creek Community Plan was one of the first to be approved by the city in two thousand and three. Since then, many plans have been created within the communities that have leveraged the existing UDC, which includes those defined within low-density and medium-density residential. I do not agree with the council should be approving the change to the UDC specific to the R4 residential zoning district from medium-density to low-density classification. Over the last twenty years, I've spent a lot of time working with developers, seeking denser infill development in our community. By moving the R4 zoning from medium-density to low-density removes one of those communication points required by the developers seeking denser infill into our low-density communities. We're not against density, and, you know, we just want to ensure that there's community engagement. And this week, we had encouraging dialogue from District Seven Office that engaged with our, with a developer to bring in a more dense community into actually an existing low-density development, and it seems like it's going to work through very well. So, so it's, so, you know, it's good to have those dialogues that are provided through these, these rules that are kind of set in place. And so, overall, you know, it's just not for that. The same dialogue, as I said, about the MF, moving the MF-33 from the high-density to medium-density. A second observation is the current UDC proposal is a naming convention in the zoning category of urban low-density residential, which I believe is misleading and should be renamed to urban medium-density residential because it more closely aligns with the other categories that are, the other zoning districts that are within those, within the low-density versus the medium-density. So, by doing so, the future, it allows for the future dialogue again for community with those developers. And finally, as a general comment, yeah, I think anything that we do that in the UDC that potentially diminishes the strength and validity of existing community and neighborhood plans is detrimental really to the city of San Antonio. Hundreds of hours have been spent, and so I'd just like to respect those hours spent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mana. Cynthia Spillman?
Good morning. My name's Cynthia Spillman. I live at nine hundred West Woodlawn, and I'm a resident of District One. I'm also on the board of the Beacon Hill Area Neighborhood Association and steering member of Tier One Neighborhood Coalition. Dear Mayor and council members, Beacon Hill Neighborhood has dealt with much of the tensions and stress that many downtown-area neighborhoods have felt regarding incompatible development and inconsistent zoning changes. Land use is an important tool to help create consistency for not only developers but the neighbors that live with the developments. We've worked with other neighborhoods through our membership in Tier One Neighborhood Coalition for months, as well as attended numerous city and AIA meetings to advocate changes to the flu proposal that make it more balanced and thoughtful for advocating for the changes of category for MF-33, MF-25, and RM4, for example. We, and as we create new subarea plans and see development incentives through IDZ, C-CHIP, and Fee Waiver Program changes, as well as possible by-right zoning to benefit housing, there has to be a structure in place that guides us in the future as we accommodate change, that helps maintain resilient neighborhoods instead of destroying them. If implemented correctly, neighborhoods will be able to create land use plans for their community, and future zoning changes will be dependent on those plans. Several incompatible developments in neighborhoods that exist now would not have been possible without a planning change if the flu proposals had already been adopted. The flu changes with our recommended amendments help us maintain neighborhood character while accommodating future development. Please support the future land use changes, including the amendments from District One that have incorporate, that have incorporated feedback from San Antonio neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spillman. Colin Jones?
Good morning. My name is Colin Jones. I live at eleven twenty-three Nolan, San Antonio, Texas. I'm going to be reading a letter here on behalf of Tier One Steering Committee. Mayor, Tier One Neighborhood Coalition is a coalition of over fifty interlooped four-ten neighborhoods that encompass all but three council districts. While no one can represent that many different entities without a vote, our steering committee of nine comes from the far, excuse me, from the four parts of the inner city, and we ask City Council today to support the proposed future land use plan. We proposed, excuse me, we held a well-attended public workshop at San Antonio College on the future land use changes, as well as countless smaller meetings with different neighborhood stakeholders, worked on issues over the last several months to suggest balanced changes in the proposal, and helped create an effective tool to plan for the future as we participate in the SA Tomorrow Comprehensive Subarea Planning. We worked with individual neighborhoods and more local coalitions to help produce changes we hope will guide the future of our communities while protecting and preserving what is best about us. No document is perfect, and so much depends on our trust in the city to work in good faith with its residents, but the future land use changes will give structure to an unwieldy land use, which we hope will help us all make sound decisions about our future. Tier One Neighborhood Coalition Steering Committee, Kosa McAlvin, Christine Drennan, Tony Garcia, Homer Hayes, myself, Ricky Kushner, Velma Peña, Cynthia Spillman, and Teresa Ibanez. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Velma Peña?
Good morning, council members, Mayor Nambur. My name's Amelia, and I reside at sixteen thirty-five Portosil. I'm the president of the Historic Westside Resident Association.
Good morning. My name's Velma Peña. I am the president of the Westwood Square Neighborhood Association, as well as the Westside Neighborhood Association's Coalition. I live at twelve oh eight Penn.
The future land use changes give structure to progress in our neighborhoods so that residents and developers know the rules. We're seeing our neighborhoods destroyed, one case at a time, especially what happened yesterday at twelve oh one Montezuma. We want progress and revitalization for the residents who live here. Councilwoman Gonzalez, please continue to preserve our community and work for the betterment of us all by endorsing this plan. Council members, please support the flu as we move into the future, especially the amendments proposed by District One. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peña. Mary Johnson? Mary Johnson? Ann Engelhardt? I'm sorry, Ann Engler.
Thank you. My name's Ann Engler, and I live at three three one Mink in Delview. And yesterday, it became apparent that many of us needed to step forward, so I prepared a letter, and I was able to send that to all of y'all in the wee hours before going to bed at midnight. And I'm writing to ask you to support the land use changes that have been incorporated with the feedback from the San Antonio neighbors. Much work and the dedication from my contemporaries have gone into developing these plans to protect current and future neighborhood developments, to be used and be meaningful to our beloved and unique neighborhoods, as well as allow for growth and density. And you've already heard from Cynthia and others today about Beacon Hill, and it's just imperative that I feel that we have something that's consistent going forward because if, if we don't have it, then we've, we've got opportunities where neighborhoods are going to be left behind, but more importantly, the voices of the residents will be too. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Engler. Councilwoman Viegrin.
Thank you, Mayor, and I want to thank everyone for coming out and all of the letters and everything that has been shared and communicated with our offices because this is very important. This is a very important step that we're taking right now, and it involves thorough and transparent communication and process as we move forward. I know back in June, this was moving forward on the council agenda, but we move forward with a continuance to continue to have public input into this process, and the public input has been happening. So, Rudy, I have some questions for you right now. Can you please, on, so the CPC on August fifteenth, the process was again, so in June twenty-first, the process was first paused to have more community inputs in order to reengage our communities as some districts' residents needed more time to get a better understanding of the ordinance as we were amending the land use categories to implement this SA Tomorrow Comprehensive Plan. And then further, on August fifteenth, the process was again paused so AIA could come in and do some meetings before returning to full council today. And what feedback did the Planning Department receive from those AIA meetings?
Specifically related to the AIA meetings, the Planning Department didn't receive any direct feedback about those. We did receive feedback from one of the architects that participated in the process related to his specific presentation. That was Mario Peña, and we appreciated that, related to his equity presentation, but nothing specific related to land use, ma'am.
Okay. And the reason that the council public hearing on the twenty-first was paused is because staff, we requested that staff hold more community meetings, and from what I understand, obviously, those meetings were held. And what were those meetings, what were the takeaways from those community meetings?
That's a great question, Councilwoman. Actually, the takeaways were relatively split from the community members. We had over a hundred and twenty folks participate in the process and participate in those community meetings. We received seventy-eight comment cards back from folks who wanted to actually write out what their concerns were or their support, with a total of ninety-one individual comments. And from all of the feedback that we received, it was fairly evident that it was split down the middle. There were, about half the folks thought that we weren't providing enough opportunity for more density or enough opportunity for more choice when it came to land use, and the other half thought that maybe there was too much emphasis on, on density. So it was split down the middle, which made us feel even more comfortable that we're, we're providing a, a moderate proposal forward to council.
All right. Thank you. And from what was originally presented in June, what has changed because of those, those meetings? What did y'all? What did y'all change?
Well, in terms of modifications to staff's recommendations, again, the interaction that we had with folks and the takeaways that we had from those community meetings was that the recommendation was sound, and so we wanted to proceed forward with the recommendation that y'all have in front of y'all today, a recommendation that provided that flexibility. It was one that has gone through the entire public engagement process. Modifications have been made throughout this process. An example would be, following a key point in the process where we had our citywide community meetings, it was fairly evident that there was some work that needed to be done with the RM4 mixed residential district. And since we heard that not just from individual residents, but also from some staff members within your offices, we thought it prudent to remove it and to make the modifications between now and the 2020 amendment process, and then bring it back forward so that it can be utilized well and incorporated into the land use framework.
And on the SA Tomorrow Comprehensive Plan, we are going to have a five-year review.
Correct.
So when we move forward, there's always, this is going to be a dynamic plan where we're going to be able to review it and go through a community outreach process again. And my understanding is in 2019, we're going to open up that review again.
So there's two things that will actually be occurring over the course of the next few, a couple of years. The first one, you're correct, would be the Unified Development Code amendments that would be forwarded to the City Council in 2020. The Planning Department, through funding that was dedicated from the council, will be conducting a Unified Development Code assessment. And what we're going to do is we're going to hire a third-party consultant to look at the comprehensive plan and the goals and policies therein, to look at the Unified Development Code, and to see what do we need to modify in order to make sure that we're actually implementing those goals and policies. Additionally, the Planning Department also will be providing to the City Council, following a five-year process, a status report on where are we actually in implementing the comprehensive plan. So the council will have those two opportunities to provide guidance, one, on the development code, and then number two, on the policies that are in the plan itself.
And I need clarification. What we're moving forward with right now is not about that whole IDZ category.
That is correct, ma'am.
That is still something that we need to talk about later.
Yes, ma'am. As I understand it, there is a completely separate process, a CCR process that is being driven by the Development Services Department to provide IDZ reform and recommendations about IDZ. That is not part of what this proposal would entail.
Okay. Thank you very much for that clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
I think, as was mentioned in many of the statements here, we are a very different community, and I think we took a bold step to have a comprehensive plan, the SA Tomorrow Plan for San Antonio, because we wanted that guidance and we wanted that clarification. And, as was mentioned, safeguarding for our neighborhoods and our communities, as many of our neighborhoods and communities are going through transitions. And as was mentioned, too, there are a lot of inconsistencies in myself and in my district. We've had to initiate CCRs to do different items for land use, et cetera. But like I mentioned earlier, pausing the June 21st council meeting was to reengage the community, and we have done that, and to make sure that we continue to reach out and try and answer those pending questions to the changes in the land use categories. Now, I also understand that what we have here presented today, the staff's recommendation, that the Planning Commission's Technical Advisory Committee, the Planning Commission, and the Zoning Commission have been briefed on staff changes and all recommend approval.
That is correct, ma'am.
And I want to make sure that we follow this process. And I thank my council colleagues for this continued vetting of this, and that's why we're here today. But I also want to make sure that, I know that you all have, and we have, received just yesterday, the council members, two amendments to this, and if we're talking about process and we're talking about transparency and true, I would like to have more vetting of that. So to put this forward in this time and place, I don't think I could speak to that as being the proper and true process that we needed to go through. So I'm not saying that I would, I'm against the MF-25 or the medium density, but we haven't gone through the appropriate process and vetting that I think we needed to do in that, instead of getting it the day before. And to be faithful to all of the citizens of San Antonio, because it would impact all of the citizens in San Antonio. And you all know, because I've shared it last time, the Brooks Regional Center has been waiting to move forward, and that's on the south side of San Antonio, but because of the delay, we've had to wait on this as well. But I know that if needs to be, if need to be, my colleagues, just like they did with the IDZ, you know, IDZ changes and investigations, that could happen through a CCR as well. So with that, Mayor, at this time, I would like to move forward and make a motion to approve staff's recommendation on adopting the proposed amendments to Chapter 35 Unified Development Code.
There's a motion and a second for approval of item number 15. And we have many of our colleagues signed up to speak, so we'll go ahead and start with Councilman Trevino.
Thank you, Mayor. And I had hoped to pull this item to offer an amendment to this item based on the thorough evaluation by myself and my District One staff, along with planning and the District One and Tier One neighborhoods. Really, this is about the character of their communities. And first, I'd just simply say, look, Rudy and Bridget and the entire Planning Department, I appreciate all your hard work. This is a tremendous amount of work. You know, what we're simply saying is that there's pieces of this that I think we've been fairly consistent about in what we're trying to accomplish, and at the heart of that is protecting the character and spirit of neighborhoods, as you heard earlier. First, I'd like to submit all the letters received on behalf of neighborhoods in District One and Tier One and beyond, for the record. Before I go there, I also want to thank Chrissy for all her hard work on this. You've really gone above and beyond to make sure that the neighborhoods are being heard, and we want to protect our neighborhood characters, and that is not a new thing. That is not something that we just brought up. You know, what we're simply saying is that there are some things we are experiencing, and we've been trying to address those, and it was indicated from your office that we'd have to make this in form of an amendment, so we're going to do that. I want to point out that, you know, we have looked at these and how the categories have been applied, and how they compare to those draft maps outside of our district, and we have noticed there's a clear trend in the application of the categories. The medium density category is being applied to neighborhoods that have smaller parcels and therefore higher levels of density, or perhaps a history of established duplexes in the area, but which have only residential uses for large areas. We have also reviewed all 19 of our existing neighborhood and sector plans, none of which include MF-33 in the medium density residential category, most of which are capped at the category of MF-18. The corridors where we would hope to see the large multifamily complexes such as MF-33 and above are being designated mixed use, not medium density residential, because these projects' areas for apartments are next to offices, commercial spaces, and services. The neighborhood mixed use category, which has been applied to our corridors, is currently capped at MF-18 density. Our proposal is to even those two out, and as they are adjacent to each other and allow for more density on the corridors and not allow high-density apartments inside of neighborhoods, and I want to be clear about what I'm saying, because this is what's happening. It didn't happen yesterday. It's happening, in fact, since day one I've been on this council. It's almost four years now, and that is we're seeing incompatible developments in the middle of a block, splitting neighborhoods. That's a real thing. And, you know, we have filed many CCRs to try to deal with this, and we know that it's not going to be a silver bullet. We know it's going to take these kinds of motions where we're adjusting a little piece of a much bigger plan, which, again, I want to stress that I realize that this is a big plan and there's a lot of work that's gone into it by planning, so we certainly appreciate that. We're simply asking for some consideration. We've distributed to my council colleagues a comparison of what MF-33 and MF-25 look like when built to capacity in terms of height and density, which I hope will illustrate why we're proposing these changes. Again, I want to point out, this is about timing, and part of it is the fact that this is part of the year-one implementation, and we want to use every tool that's available to us to address the concerns that are affecting our neighborhoods. And one of those is basically, it's a simple ask, it's the neighborhood plans, and I will continue to advocate for neighborhood plans. I will continue to advocate for a way to make sure that the character of neighborhoods are protected, are considered as part of our planning process, that they're thoughtful, and they're the reason that the city has the character it has. And so, therefore, I move to amend land use categories by removing MF-33 from the medium density residential category and adding MF-25 to the category, to the neighborhood mixed use category. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, there's a motion and a second for an amendment, as read by Councilman Trevino to item number 15. And so, as we proceed through the remainder of the discussion, I will ask my colleagues to contain their comments to the amendment. We'll take up the motion on the amendment, and then we'll move forward with the main item and the main motion. So we'll start with Councilman Perry.
Thank you, sir. It's already been discussed about the process, and we have gone through a lengthy process. If you can pull up Slide 5. I mean, that kind of tells a story there. And the next, Slide 6. We do have a process here, and there's been plenty of opportunities to make changes along the way, and I understand that this is a flexible plan, that additional changes can be made in the future, and they probably will be. But I can just look at both the communities, the neighborhoods, as well as industry has had ample opportunity. I mean, when did we actually start this process? How long ago?
This process actually started approximately one year ago.
About a year ago.
Yes, sir.
So we've had about a year, and a lot of meetings, a lot of manpower, a lot of hours that has gone into this process and this product that the staff is making a recommendation today to pass. And we've received a letter from REXA. We've just received notification from the Apartment Association that they support what is being offered today, because they were a part of that process. They just got this change, a recommended change, yesterday. And that's very unfair for all the players in this process to make a decision or try to review and get everybody to sit down around a table again to make a change in something that's taken over a year to put together. So I'll be supporting the staff recommendation, and if there's some fatal flaws in this, what can, we don't have to wait for the next major review of this, right? I mean, CCR could be submitted today.
If there were fatal flaws or through the process, if we find that there are complications that need to be addressed, when council adopted the comprehensive plan, part of that ordinance also provides for the Planning Department to submit implementation amendments in order to continue through the process. And so, should we find that there are those issues, we actually can submit to council an amendment.
So there's a process
Yes, sir.
that changes can be made, that, again, gets everybody around the table to have an opportunity to review and make comments and agree or agree to disagree or whatever to get to that final product again.
Agreed.
Okay, great. Well, again, I'll be supporting the staff recommendation. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Perry. Councilman Courage.
Thank you, Mayor. And looking at this timeline, this process that we have up here, were you at most of these meetings yourself?
Yes, sir. I presented at the vast majority of these meetings. Yes, sir.
Okay. The particular issues that are brought up today by Councilman Trevino, the MF-33 and MF-25 redesignation in different areas than you're recommending, were those issues brought up and discussed early in the process, beginning of the process, all through the process, or did they just come up at the end of this process?
Through the process that has been laid out on Slide 5 and Slide 6, we understand that there were some neighborhoods that had some concern related to MF-33 within the medium density residential, having said, and that, we heard that probably about the middle point of the process. We had those meetings, we had those discussions, and we made it very clear that staff's professional opinion, and given the balanced opinion that we're hearing from other folks within the community, you know, we heard their concerns. So just because we don't necessarily agree didn't mean that we didn't actually hear them out. We heard them. We believe that they are valid, and that through the community planning process, that we will work to ensure that neighborhood character and community protection are taken into consideration. In terms of the amendments that have been proposed and are on the floor following Councilwoman Viegron's amendment, we didn't know about those until Monday, specifically.
Okay. Thank you. Now, I understand with MF-33, one of the things that was mentioned to me, that someone could want to rezone a residential property in the middle of a neighborhood to MF-33, and that would allow them to build a four-story apartment complex there?
Well, given the way that the process works, they can actually do that today. At the end of the day, an applicant can always submit an amendment to any plan, and they can submit any sort of rezoning case that they would like. Through this process, what we're proposing is that we are updating all of these land use plans, so they will all have, number one, updated land use categories, but also updated policies. So, for instance, while it may not necessarily directly speak to the issue of MF-33 within a particular block, we can talk a little bit about the Oakland Estates situation, because I know that was brought up earlier. Prue Road is not necessarily a fully improved arterial roadway that's north of Oakland Estates. There has been concern about R4 zoning permeating into the neighborhood, given the fact that there is a low, proposed, the proposed low-density residential category would include R4. Having said that, part of the localized policy that can be developed as part of the SA Tomorrow Plan, given that we have been promoting this idea of flexibility within these plans, we can develop a policy that says, within the properties that are located along Prue Road, densities that are at R4 or greater are not recommended. And so that policy would essentially supersede the MAP category, because it would be a text policy. But again, any applicant at any time can request a plan amendment or a zoning change for any parcel within the city. That is part of their right as a property owner.
Right. But if MF-33 were not included in medium density, then could someone go into an area and try and rezone it to MF-33?
They, there actually is a process for them to do that as well. Anyone can also submit a text amendment to a plan. So let's just say that MF-33 were not included within the medium density residential category. Somebody can actually still, through the plan amendment process, submit a text amendment and say, "We want MF-33 in these land use categories because we want to apply for a zoning change."
And what would be the process to have that happen?
They would have to submit an amendment, an application for an amendment to the Development Services Department, and ultimately, that request would still have to come to City Council.
Does it have to go through the community?
Yes. Well, there is, right now, there is no public participation requirement for the submittal of an application. So it's just like any other application. They would submit it to the Development Services Department, but the Development Services Department does notify the community. They notify registered neighborhood associations. When it comes to zoning changes, property owners within 200 feet all receive a notice. So there is a process that is laid out to make sure that the community is aware, as well as the new updated signs that are provided to the community.
And so, and I'm just trying to understand, if we move this out of this area, you know, what the impact is. So you're saying that someone can still request to replan a neighborhood to allow MF-33, but it's just a matter of, they make the request, the city planning department handles it, they send out notices saying, "There's this request." They have to have public hearings?
Absolutely. There has to be a public hearing that's involved with any modification to a land use plan that's been adopted, or to any zoning.
And then if...
...or to any zoning.
And then if the Planning Commission approves that modification, then it still comes to council for its final-
It must still come to council for consideration. And I would like to also point out that the, the construction of the land use categories and the recommended zoning districts that are attached to them do not necessarily reflect what must be on the ground. If something were categorized as medium-density residential, it doesn't have to be zoned MF thirty-three. That is part of the reason why the planning department recommended and the council approved the budget, so that the planning department can take the next step in implementing these land use plans by rezoning properties, so that if we're going to work with the community to develop these land use plans, we should also be working with the community to ensure that the zoning is most appropriate for those parcels. So we will be working with the community to ensure that the appropriate level of intensity is placed on a piece of property. So the category is just the first step. It's the labeling of property. Ultimately, there still has to be a zoning process that determines what can actually go on the ground. So in the instance, let's say of a residential area that is categorized as medium-density residential, if there are single-family residences throughout that block, typically, we would categorize it at the lea- at the least amount of, of density that, that would be appropriate within that category. I mean, we, we would certainly work with the neighborhoods to make sure that that is part of, part of the process.
Well, if there are single-family and duplexes, then does it become more of a, a mid-density area then?
There is a potential for that. I think that, again, neighborhoods and communities are, as part of the process, are case-by-case. There are also other categories. It doesn't necessarily have to be a medium-density residential category. In an instance like that, where there's a mixed neighborhood that has duplexes, triplexes, and single-family residences, we also have proposed the urban-low-density residential category, which is a new category that has precedent in San Antonio. There are currently plans within the community that have that category listed within them. So with the adopted staff proposal, that category would be available, and we could use it in an instance like that potentially.
And would that also mean that a neighborhood might request to be labeled an urban-low-density or something?
Sure. We would, as, as we go through the community planning process, there is the opportunity for a neighborhood to, to work with us to categorize them a number of different, a number of different ways. It doesn't have to be low-density, urban-low-density, medium-density. And then there's also nuance that can be provided within that, too. We could categorize neighborhoods based on that input that we get from them, because they're the ones that live there. If they believe this sector of our neighborhood really could see additional density and could accommodate more, provided it was done a certain way, we could categorize it one way, whereas the balance of that neighborhood could be categorized a different way. So all of that is part of that community planning process and having those sit-down meetings. And, and I think that the, the speaker said it pointedly, it is a very arduous process, but it is one of those processes that we wanna make sure that folks are at the table, that we have those very detailed meetings to ultimately go almost block by block in certain instances, to make sure that we're getting it right.
Yeah. I, I realize in a lot of the communities we've heard from, and I received the letters and, and looked at these over, they're in areas that because we haven't had these kinds of new restrictions that are proposed, the, the new guidelines, that a lot of multifamily properties have already been developed in single-family residences, which kind of already opens the door to enable MF thirty-threes to pop up in these neighborhoods without any, any real mechanism to stop them, because some of them have already been put there. Do you think that if MF thirty-three was removed from these medium-density areas, that would create a, a greater barrier for the continuing development of, of similar types of properties in those neighborhoods?
I wouldn't think so, Councilman, given the fact that if an MF thirty-three property was being developed utilizing the current zoning, the zoning would still remain. At the end of the day, we would, we would still have to work with the community to develop the appropriate land use plan. So if the community says, "We have a neighborhood," and we do have certain instances of this, we actually just had a meeting with the Westside Neighborhoods, the, the Westside Neighborhoods Coalition. And part of the discussion that occurred at that meeting was, there is a sector plan out in that community for a portion of the Westside Community Plan that recommends the urban tier or the suburban tier land use category, which allows, according to the land use palette, allows up to MF thirty-three density. That community has expressed numerous times that they want a lower-density community. And so part of our process has to be looking at the, at the current uses that are on the ground, looking at the current zoning, adjusting the land use plan accordingly, and then following it up with a zoning process. We can adopt a land use plan for an area, but if we don't address it with zoning, then the, the entitlement is still on the ground for somebody to still put an MF thirty-three property. So the, the land use categories, the recommended zoning allowances that are within those categories are one small piece of, of a much greater process that has to occur in order for us to, to conserve the, the neighborhood character.
Can there be modifications to MF thirty-three that would say they can only be developed on arterial streets rather than, you know, central neighborhood streets?
There can always be amendments to zoning districts through the standard amendment process. So if we find that MF thirty-three has challenges that need to be addressed, and maybe there's some locational criteria and so forth that may need to be considered, that would be done typically through the UDC amendment process. If that is a concern, that is something that the, that the planning department can collaborate with Development Services on, to explore and at least look at that district and see, is it being abused in some way? Is there some sort of reform that would need to occur for that, for that district? And then we could amend, we could make some recommended amendments and we can bring those forward as part of the 2020 amendment process.
Could you amend MF thirty-threes to be no greater than three stories?
Yes, sir. That, that, that could be part of a potential amendment package in the fut- in the future following exploration and so forth.
Okay. Thank you. I have no other questions.
Courage, Councilman Brockhaus.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate your time. You're doing very well.
Thank you.
A resident actually just texted me right now and sent me these very kind words. I guess they're watching because it's a Thursday and what better things you have to do than watch a city council meeting? He's articulate and concise, but pleasant, what they said about you. I have to agree, you are, you're very pleasant.
I appreciate the comments, sir.
You're making this very exciting, this, this wonderful topic. I just wanted to, just real quick, I mean, I'm in support of the overall piece, but on this particular amendment, I will not be supporting it. I, I think that, I'm not unsympathetic to the needs of neighborhoods, you know, specifically, I think about my time back in serving District One and Beacon Hill and those neighborhoods. And, and we gotta find the answer for it. I, I just don't know what it is. The MF thirty-three designation is, is good for District Six and some of the things we're trying to accomplish. And then in the expanding opportunities with development, with what we're trying to do with incentivizing housing and growth and all that, you know, I'm fully on board with that opportunity being available. But now, we're gonna have to answer that question a lot sooner rather than later about protecting areas and communities like Beacon Hill, right, which are on the cusp of downtown, they're not quite, you know, and, and their properties are gonna get picked up and building is coming, and then they're, they wanna keep hold of their culture and their community, and they don't want too much growth, but they want enough to bring in the younger population and to keep their neighborhood living and vibrant for years and decades to come. So we have, we have to find the answer. And the fact that, now frankly, that you brought it up at the end of the process, that didn't bother me at all. I mean, you got a job to do and you're representing your, your district and your community. And if somebody in my community brought it to me the last couple of days, said, "Hey, man, I need you to go fight for this," and it makes sense, and is representative of District One or District Seven, I mean, you put it up there and we take a vote on it, and it is where it is. But I'd like to get, when, when this is done from a, this vote today on this piece, when it's finished, we, we need to continue that conversation about, you know, saving communities. Because someday in the future, who knows how long, District Six is gonna be the District One. And we're just gonna be having the same conversation about my community thirty, twenty-five, thirty years down the road, when we're encased by development and building and then the other communities outside want the higher, you know, the higher density, the bigger zoning opportunities and the bigger development opportunities, and we're gonna be struggling as the inner-city portion, right? So in our letter six, anything inside sixteen oh four is gonna be the, today's inside four-ten. So, you know, we gotta get there and get that answer done quickly. Again, not unsympathetic at all to the goals of protecting neighborhoods and making sure, but overall, I think it's a good first step, and I'd like to as quickly as possible get around to those answers, because as we incentivize this growth and, and do these things, neighborhoods and their identity are gonna get, are usually the first thing up on the chopping block when it comes to development, which I, I wanna pursue everywhere we can in the city in the context of what is best for that neighborhood and community. And in that case, that's what council members, my colleagues, Councilman Trevino and Councilwoman Sandoval are attempting to do today. So right conversation, I think, to have, but in this particular, just not the right time, but I wanna get it done as soon as we can after this vote. But I'm appreciative of the staff work and, and I'll be supporting the recommendation today.
Thank you. We look forward to having that discussion with the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Brockhaus. Councilwoman Sandoval.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I seconded this motion because I believe the councilmen brought forward some good points in that they were worthy of a discussion before we moved forward on this. I, I think the changes, you know, we were talking yesterday about historic agreement on the, on the Alamo, and, and I think this is historic, too, so we wanna be very thoughtful as we move forward. You know, the more you work on something, sometimes the more things you find, the more you learn as you're going along, and you wanna keep improving it. But unfortunately, at some point, we, we do have to make a decision, right, in, in order to, to get going. But nonetheless, I do think this is worthy of, of the discussion, so I'm, I'm glad that we're having it right now. I do want to, I guess I need some clarification here. What the councilman had discussed was, what density are we seeing, will we be seeing under this plan along the major corridors?
I, I think to, to best answer the question, it would, it really depends, because corridors, just like neighborhoods and various other areas of our city, they're also different. Corridors tend to have almost character areas, and, and just for the sake of the conversation, I'll use Bndera Road. There are a number-
My favorite.
Of course. Yes, ma'am. There are a significant number of, of parcels along Bndera Road that ultimately have created several different character types within the community. So there are some corridors that would be like an urban-mixed-use type density, if there is the opportunity for you to leverage transit investments that, that are in the area, if we can make improvements to walkability and the appropriate level of, of infrastructure, other types of infrastructure improvements. There could be, you know, an agglomeration of, of density along with neighborhood serving uses and so forth. But then we also have other areas like San Pedro Road in District One, where there is a significant amount, even though it's a major corridor, of lined with single-family residences. So the character along that corridor would be very different as well. So I think that it's incumbent upon the planning department, when we work with the community, to, to be sensitive to that, to the idea that, that no corridor is alike, no neighborhood is alike, the circumstances are very different, and that's the reason why the comprehensive plan recommended, that we're not moving forward with sub-area plans, whether they be regional center or community plans or corridor plans, that recommend a blanket type of land use for any one area. We have to have a map and we have to have policies that are localized to that specific area.
So in terms of, the councilman is proposing to have a land use category that's mixed-use, MF twenty-five, that would be applicable along the high-capacity transit corridors. Are you telling me that's not possible with the current staff recommendation?
And what I, with the current staff recommendation, we have proposed up to MF eighteen within the neighborhood mixed-use category, which is where the councilman has recommended adding the MF twenty-five. So given the fact that we would like, as the planning department, at least, our proposal to the council would be to continue to be faithful to the public engagement that we have had. And so we want to be sure that, we have proposed to the community since the beginning that MF eighteen would be the highest level of density in, in that particular category. So we're proposing that today. At, towards, you know, at the end of this process, it would be council's discretion if you believe that it would be most appropriate to have the twenty-five district within that category.
Sorry, you promised that MF eighteen would be the highest density they would see along...
Within that land use category, not necessarily specifically-
Where, but within a ca-
Where, within the category. The application would come during the community planning process.
The category, sorry, and just state again which category?
That is the neighborhood mixed-use category, is what I believe I, I heard.
Right, right, okay. So, sorry, I don't understand why the density, why you would recommend a lower density for mixed-use than just non-mixed-use.
When it comes to the neighborhood-skilled mixed-use category, we have had a number of conversations with various community stakeholders, and there has been this conversation, some, some level of consternation related to density. And the neighborhood-skilled mixed-use category being most appropriate adjacent to, to neighborhoods, where neighborhoods have the opportunity to access the goods and services that that category would provide. Additionally, that category would also provide opportunity if somebody wanted to, let's say, live in the place of where they're conducting their retail or conducting their service use. If they wanted to have apartments upstairs or condominiums upstairs or somewhere within that facility, then the category would allow that flexibility as well. So given the fact that that category and the text within the category describing it says that it would be adjacent to residential neighborhoods, there was a discussion with the community about what level of density would be most appropriate there, what level of density would the community be willing to tolerate if we're creating this, this category at all? This is a new category.
Okay. So they would be willing to tolerate up to that density adjacent, but it sounds like you believe they're willing to tolerate an even higher density within the neighborhood?
Not necessarily. Again, it depends on how the community moves forward through the planning process in determining what, what appropriate category should be within a particular community. The example that I gave earlier about a neighborhood that may believe that there is a, a small pocket where additional density could be appropriate, the planning department, of course, is willing to consider that discussion with the community, if the community feels that a center neighborhood collective of parcels would be appropriate for higher density. But I wouldn't want to completely just say that that would apply across the board.
Okay. These are, this is a complicated change. It's not, I don't believe it's, it's straightforward, so I'm still processing that. I, I do have a, a couple of questions. Because this is so complicated, can you explain to me, Rudy, why are we seeing this on the dais? The councilman mentioned that that was the direction you gave him as opposed to integrating or discussing it as, as a staff recommendation?
The councilman had re, is making, these amendments, the MF twenty-five and the neighborhood-mixed-use and the MF thirty-three and the, the removal of the MF thirty-three from the medium-density residential is a, is a request that Councilman Trevino is making to the council. It is not part of staff's recommendation, so it would have to be a, an amendment that the council would make.
So, so basically, staff is not rec, would have recommended against it, even if this came up two months ago?
Because it has not been part of our community outreach, the proposal that you have in front of you is the one that we are advocating for today. Yes, ma'am.
And can you explain, again, I'm just trying to understand the, the process here. So here we are at, at council voting on something extremely significant. Was this discussed at, when was the last time this was discussed at committee? The committee dedicated to the comprehensive planning process?
The comprehensive planning committee met on June twentieth, which is at the, because the, the city council, they, they rec, they heard a briefing on the twentieth. The city council here considered on the twenty-first and asked it to be remanded back to the comprehensive planning committee. At the comprehensive planning committee over the summer, it was determined that we, they would like to see one more round of community engagement meetings that were gonna be conducted by the American Institute of Architects chapter locally. And so following that, it was also determined at the CPC that we should bring it back on this date.
Okay, so CPC said, "We do not want to see any revisions that occur after AIA," basically.
The CPC did not suggest for or against any, any revisions at that time. No motion was made related to revisions at the CPC.
But they, they basically said, "We are okay with whatever happens. It does not need to come back to the CPC." They, they didn't request to see any changes-
Correct.
...after that round of engagement.
Correct, ma'am. They forwarded it to the city council at that meeting.
Okay. So I just, thank you for explaining that process to me. It, it helps me sort of put the pieces together, how, how we ended up here today. I do wanna make just a, a comment, and this is, so we have a process at City Hall, and I, I think it's a great process that, that the city manager started. It's called a high-profile solicitation for, for contracts, right? Things that are extremely controversial, that we wanna have above board. There is, there is a very clear process about how that's going to happen. I think we need to consider starting to do that for high-profile policy that we, that we bring forward, because, you know, even back on June twenty-first, and this is no attack on you at all-
Understood, ma'am.
I'm just bringing up a, a discussion item. Even back on June twenty-first, I think there was some uncertainty about, well, what's the appropriate way to do the outreach when we have a major change coming to council, but we didn't take it back to the stakeholders? And I put forward a CCR called Advancing Public Participation, and thank you, Rudy, you and your team have taken notice and you're starting to integrate some of the recommendations in there. I really appreciate that. But I, I just want to throw it out there to my colleagues that I think we do need to start thinking about when we have a high-profile policy item, what are, what are gonna be our standards, what are gonna be our expectations, that the public can, can expect from us that, you know, when we're gonna go to them, when we're gonna go to committee, all, all that stuff. stuff. So, thank you very much for answering those questions, I appreciate it, Rudy.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sandoval. Councilman Palais.
Thank you. There's an old cowboy saying that says, if you don't know where you're going, you best not put on your spurs. And to be honest with you, I have no idea what I'm going to do here. But what I do think is, I haven't heard enough, and I've heard a lot of really good points, and I'm just curious if Mr. Trevino has any good answers to this, because I'm really curious to hear what you've got to say. And so, now that I've chimed in, Mayor, I kind of regret it. And I'd like to hear what Councilman Trevino has to say. Thanks, Mayor.
I'm sorry, Councilman, are you yielding the floor to Councilman Trevino? All right, we have other members of council on the queue, if we can, well, actually just one, and then we'll go back to Councilman Trevino, if that's okay? All right, Councilman Shaw.
Thanks, Mayor. You don't have to say anything, I got it. I had my questions, you answered all my questions, days before today, so thank you, to you and your team. I also understand the concerns of Councilman Trevino, and I'm sure we can address those concerns as we move forward. But as I've discussed with him, as well as my colleagues, I will be supporting the recommendation of staff, and looking forward to continuing conversation regarding the amendments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Shaw. Councilman Trevino.
Thank you, Mayor, and I just, I guess I have to address something that kept coming up, because it feels like we're talking about two separate things now, and you made a great point, Mayor, when you said, let's keep it pertinent to the amendments that I made. And what I think is being suggested is that, again, that this just came up. So, Rudy, I would ask you, did this just come up?
In terms of the full package of amendments that...
I'm talking from me, from my office, and working with you and the Planning Department, did this just come up?
Again, in terms of both of these amendments, we just heard about them on Monday, the MF-33, yes, has been part of a longstanding conversation with your office, and also with a number of neighborhoods. Yes, sir, I did see that. The neighborhood mixed-use recommendation, though, is something that we're just hearing from, yes, sir.
So, I mean, that's key, that's critical, because, I mean, first of all, I mean, I appreciate some of the comments, and I certainly want to be a proponent of process, and process is important, we want to have a robust community discussion, we want to be as engaged as we can with our residents. Point in fact, this plan is for the residents, and so, we have been bringing this issue up since day one. I want to be clear, that if my council colleagues are confused, it almost feels like it's by design. And to suggest this is just something that just came up, is something that I take exception to. So, I just want to point that out. You can disagree with me, and I think we're okay, I mean, that's why we're up here, to discuss policy, and we want to be clear about what we're talking about today. So, I agree with the mayor, let's talk about these amendments, let's talk about what they mean. But I take exception with anybody suggesting that I just brought this up. I want to be clear about that. This is about neighborhoods, this is about the character, this is about neighborhood plans, they keep saying this over and over again. I'm confused about why this is even being said at all. I'm sorry I've confused some of my colleagues, you know, I don't mean to, but I look forward to working with each and every one of you to try to help clarify some of this. I take this role very seriously, and I'll tell you, every one of my staff people, especially Chrissy, has been working diligently on this for quite a long time, and I know it's a lot of work, and I respect the work that goes into these kinds of projects. But Chrissy has worked with other council staffs, we've brought this issue up, we will continue to bring this issue up, and I will continue to advocate for what I have experienced, and what my district has experienced, as incompatible development. And we're just trying to find a way forward. So, I ask for that consideration, I realize that there is a lot of confusion, but let's, I can only hope that we continue to have more discussions on such an important topic, and I think this is one of the most important issues my district is facing. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Trevino, and first of all, I appreciate all the conversations. So, let me just say first that I'm not confused. In fact, for those of us, most of us actually, who have been up here working on Essay Tomorrow, even as prior to coming on council, could see this train coming a mile away. And that is that the premise of Essay Tomorrow, and the whole idea of a comprehensive plan, was to, number one, accommodate an incredible amount of growth that's happening in our community right now, and the fact that those incompatible developments that are occurring in District One are starting to bleed over into every single other district, and they're going to continue to happen. And without a comprehensive plan, it's going to be even worse, as we expect new development to arise, particularly as we're getting to some really serious policy discussions and resolving an imbalance in housing that's occurred. There's going to be way more development, good quality development, that we hope addresses a drastic need in housing that our city has currently today. And if we don't have rules of the road, if we don't have a comprehensive coordinated land use plan, the problems that are occurring in District One, and the reasons that Tier One got together as a coalition, will only continue to get worse. So, let me first, let me say in addition to that, I appreciate everything that Councilman Trevino has been doing. The Tier One neighborhoods, the coalition, has a seat at the table because of Councilman Trevino. And the feedback that we've gotten during those meetings, and the intense discussions that have happened, have not gone on deaf ears. In fact, I've seen a lot of changes in my time working on Essay Tomorrow on these very land use categories. I'll also say, I take my previous role as a District Eight city council member pretty seriously in this discussion as well, because Ross Lawhead has been a frequenter in city council chambers to make sure that neighborhoods have plans and that they're protected in the future. So, let me clarify one point, and this was true in the preamble of Essay Tomorrow. When we're creating new land use plans, when we're resolving some of the land use category contradictions, one of the premises is, we're doing that to protect the integrity of neighborhoods. So, I want to make sure that we don't lose the tools that we have available as single-member district representatives to make changes to land use categories, zoning categories, zoning districts, when we see that this map that we've applied to the city of San Antonio doesn't work right in this one instance. Nobody likes to say downzoning in this chamber, but it's true. We might have to downzone a few places if it looks like it's incompatible, and that's the reality, and it takes a bit of fortitude to do it, but we're going to do it, and we've done it before. But the truth of the matter is, we have to arrive at a point, I think, with this land use category, that makes the most sense for the most number of people in the most neighborhoods, and our constituents have to do their jobs in making sure they elect people who respond to the neighborhood concerns. And that's not just true when we're defining what the land use categories are today, but that's true in the future. So, with regard to the amendments, there is, there are a couple of fundamental realizations about our community that happened about four years ago during Essay Tomorrow. One of them is that we agree that we need to densify certain areas of town, that's the reality. We want to make sure that we allow for higher density, easier high-density development to occur where it's compatible. Where it's not compatible, we need to do our jobs to protect those neighborhoods. Ross's neighborhood plan in Oakland Estates needs to retain the strength and boundaries of the neighborhood that it currently has today, and not be overrun by land use changes in a bigger map. And that's something that I've committed to, and I know that Manny has committed to, and future council members will as well. The second issue, or second realization through Essay Tomorrow, is that we don't just have one urban core, we have nine of them. In fact, we're going to have thirteen of them when the real population boom occurs. And within those urban cores, that's where we're going to have to focus a lot of resources to build the infrastructure, to make those kinds of land use categories beneficial to everyone, and also to accommodate the growth and the density that's going to occur, so we can protect the neighborhoods. All that being said, I know there's been a tremendous amount of work that's gone into this. I agree with the staff recommendation. I also agree with my colleague that there are some areas where it's just not going to work the way it's intended, and we might have to see some CCRs, or we might have to see some individual action to protect areas that aren't totally compatible. So, I just wanted to level-set with everyone today, that this is no surprise, I also don't have a problem with the process, we might need to see more of these actions on the fly, but it is true that we've gotten to this point, it's not a surprise to anybody, and this is really why we said from the very start of the comprehensive planning process, all that fury over actually passing the plan, finally getting to the point, what was it, two years ago now, to pass Essay Tomorrow, that was the easy part. This is where the rubber hits the road. If we're going to have a high-quality community, if we're going to have a city that can benefit, or that can guarantee quality of life in every corner of the district, whether you're in Beacon Hill, or in any of the other Tier One neighborhoods, or in Oakland Estates, or in a high-density area like South Town, we've got to have a comprehensive plan that works, and we have to be committed in this council and moving forward to make some pretty tough decisions. That starts today, in my opinion. I agree with the councilwoman who said this is kind of historic, it is, but it also means that, starting today, we are committed to working with our neighborhoods to identify the areas where it doesn't make sense, and to make changes. As much as we give you headaches, there's more coming, Rudy and Bridget, but we've got to do that in order to execute this plan the way I think our neighborhoods, our constituents, and our council before and after have intended. So, I'll be supporting the staff recommendation, I appreciate the work of Councilman Trevino in his office, and Councilwoman Sandoval as well, who actually has Tier One folks in her office, making sure that we're doing this right. So, thank you for the work, and I'll be supporting the staff recommendation today. All right, there are no other... Well, yeah, Councilman Palais.
I hate doing this, because that was really good, and I wish I could, I want to echo to one thing, and then I want to ask a question. I will fight you tooth and nail if we, if I ever see that we are doing anything to imperil these neighborhood plans. You know, we have limit, you know, we, the city of San Antonio, have limitless resources, they don't, right? And the amount of work that they've put into protecting the character of their neighborhoods is huge, and they've done it despite the fact that they've got day jobs and families to take care of, and, you know, Ross is doing this pro bono. And so, word of warning, you know, I'll be the first to scream and yell at you, you know, if I ever see anything that even comes close to that. Thanks, Ross, for coming out. With regards to Councilman Trevino, I'm still confused, I hate telling you that. And so, what, I walked in here today wanting to make, you know, two amendments as well. I've taken mine back, just to kind of think about them a little bit more. The commitment I make to you is, I still want to take a stab at making some minor tweaks on my end as well, and I'll be happy to work with you on yours, and, you know, the best way to find out if you can trust me on that is to trust me on that. And so, but that's my comment. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilman Palais. Okay, so there are two motions on the floor. We'll take up the secondary motion first, which is the amendment offered by Councilman Trevino, seconded by Councilwoman Sandoval. So, this is the amendment offered by Councilman Trevino, please vote. Motion fails. Now, we'll move now to the primary motion, which is the motion made by Councilwoman Viagra for item fifteen. Please vote. Motion carries. All right. Thank you again, everyone, for coming out, and this episode of Essay Tomorrow will continue to the next edition. Item number twenty.
Item number twenty is a resolution initiating...